We need a roll call of attendance, please.
Roll call is complete. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Julie McGraw is not here this evening. She's attending a Youth Services Bureau event tonight on youth anxiety. She is watching a screening of the movie Angst and observing a panel discussion on teen anxiety. So hopefully she'll report back to us at the next meeting.
Good. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Come on. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. We are accepting tonight on this consent agenda donations totaling eighteen hundred dollars that have been given to us by members of our community for the purposes rendered for the to the mission of the school district and whatever it is that they request us to spend the money on. Motion to approve?
So.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 We do have some presentations, as we can tell by all the people that are here tonight, some great recognition of students, staff, and community. Paul Christensen, you're going to do our first one, our Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. I am Paul Christensen. I'm an English and mathematics teacher at the high school and co-chair of the Madam Edie Education Association Teacher of the Year Committee. I am pleased to be here this evening to introduce Teacher of the Year Myklin Newman. Each spring, the association tasks the committee with soliciting nominations and reviewing the applications with the goal of choosing an outstanding educator. One who is both highly deserving of recognition for her work and can also serve as a representative of all the dedicated teachers in the classroom. Myklin is just such a teacher. Helen Eddinger stated when she nominated Myklin that Myklin quietly and humbly exemplifies the qualities needed for the unique craft of teaching kindergarten students. Myklin's peers at Wildwood speak of her as someone who is caring and kind, full of patience and integrity, and one who works hard to speak the truth at all times. She is a go-to person when others have a tricky situation with which to work. She unfailingly creates a caring and safe environment for all children to thrive and grow. In short, she's an outstanding classroom teacher with an articulate voice. She has and will continue to represent well both the teaching profession and the mission and values of Madam Edie Public Schools. Would you please join me then in recognizing the 2018-2019 Madam Edie Schools Teacher of the Year, Myklin Newman?
I guess I'm supposed to say something. Well, just thank you. It's been a very humbling and exciting experience, and I am really grateful for it. And I also just want to say that the best thing about teaching in Madam Edie is the families that we teach. And I'm grateful for all that I've had in my classroom and those that I've gotten to know in other places as well. So, thank you very much.
So first, this is for you. And then we have you, we have you join us.
Well, I think we're gonna, we're gonna sit down though, because the next.
Or get out of the way.
I'm here, I'm Lynn Veeker, and I am here to present an award. It's the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Trish Houck is a second grade teacher at Wildwood Elementary in Madam Edie Public Schools, and she was recently named the Minnesota finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Programs. Ms. Houck is a special recognition at the Minnesota State Fair on Thursday, August twenty-third at the STEM booth. The P-A-E-M-S-T are the highest honors bestowed on the United States government specifically for the K through twelve mathematics and science, including computer science teaching. Awardees serving as models for their colleagues, inspirations to their community, and leaders in the improvement of STEM education. So we'd like to congratulate Trish on this very prestigious award.
You gotta train her better.
Yeah, they're gonna teach me how it works, so everyone in the shape of hands, and I just allow it. Everyone wants to shake their hands. Do you wanna come again in the middle here?
Good evening. I am honored to be here tonight to introduce some students from the high school. In the Madam Edie High School class of two thousand and nineteen, there are three National Merit Commended Scholars. These students performed in the top three percent of students nationally who took the PSAT, which stands for Preliminary SAT, as juniors last fall. Since the PSAT is not a required exam, the students who choose to take it are by nature a self-selected, high-achieving group. Therefore, to be recognized in this way is an incredible honor for these three outstanding students. So let's have Christine Brennan join us.
Congratulations, Christine.
So once again, Chris, I'm sorry that I've done this.
But I have more.
Well, so we're just gonna join you.
Okay, I like it.
Yeah, I've worked stage.
Calvin Monitor. In addition to our commended scholars, in the class of two thousand and nineteen, we also have four students who are named National Merit Semi-finalists. The nationwide pool of semi-finalists includes only sixteen thousand students and represents less than one percent of high school seniors. These students will continue in the National Merit Scholarship Competition and compete for almost seven thousand five hundred scholarships totaling over thirty-three million dollars. I would like to ask that Thomas Atkins.
Next, we'll have a report from our student representative, and our student who's assigned to the board is actually in a theater production opening night, I believe, tonight. And so we have a replacement who will introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Michaela Fisher, a freshman at Madam Edie High School, and I'm here to like give a quick rundown of events that happened in the district. So at Wildwood, they had their Zephyr Spirit Days, which was on September twenty-eighth, and everyone wore Zephyr colors and Zephyr wear. And kindergarten students had Gingerbread Day, which occurred on September twenty-eighth. When the kindergarten class were together in a room, each of the other class's gingerbread men went missing. They searched for them all over the building to find them returned once they got back to their classes. October fifth was Picture Day, and on October ninth, kindergarteners went on a field trip to the Madam Edie Fire Station. At OHA, it was a very important but underrated day, underrated day. It was Bus Evacuation Day, which was held on September tenth. Over the course of four separate days, the entire fifth grade class visited Warner Nature Center, in which students experienced over nine hundred acres of forests, grasslands, bogs, and lakes. And in the middle school, it was October is Bully Prevention Month, and awareness is being spread about bullying through advisory meetings and signs and posters in the hall. Two weeks ago, students participated in homecoming festivities by dressing up for Spirit Days like Beach Day. And last Friday, the middle school hosted a dance, which, and I quote, "included fun bouncy houses, a food table, and a cool DJ that played music." And in the high school, it's been a very busy month for sports. Girls' and boys' soccer are now in full swing, along with volleyball, swim and dive, and cross country. Two weeks ago, Madam Edie had its football homecoming game, in which our football team creamed South St. Paul in spectacular fashion. In correspondence to this, Zephyr Pride was at an all-time high at the high school with events like Spirit Days and the Pet Fest. The homecoming dance followed the homecoming game and was hosted by Student Leadership Council in the large gym. Just yesterday, students had an opportunity to participate in the PSAT, which was a blast for all who participated.
Well, thank you. It's nice to hear the things presented as Luke wanted from other schools, instead of just being the high school. His goal was to provide information about things all over the district, and you've done a great job. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes from September thirteenth and September twenty-seventh?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Call anything out? Certainly it's a full calendar, but they're all there. District data highlights, Lynn.
Thank you. I'm Chair, members of the board. I'm Lynn Veeker, and I'm Assistant Superintendent, and also the Wildwood Principal, and also I have listed her voice here, Luki. And she is the data coordinator to share a little bit about some of the data and some of the things that we have been doing.
As we look at the data for the programming that we have. First of all, we wanted to talk about why do we collect data? Looking at data, we use it obviously for monitoring student achievement and progress. But one of the things that probably people don't see a lot is the program and instructional changes that we make based on the data. And we're gonna share a little bit about that tonight. So legislative legislation requires us to collect data for certain reports, such as the World's Best Workforce, North Star Accountability System, you'll hear a little more about that. And then if we have different funding, they require us to report back on such as Title One and the ADSES funding, which is the alternative delivery of specialized instructional services. And EIS is Early Intervention Services, which also has a requirement when we collect and report back on our data. The Integration and Equity Plan that we have, when we have our goals set, we have to gather data for that. And then for teacher improvement also is the reason we use some of the data. So we are using the data as we collect it, so.
The North Star Accountability, Christine is gonna share a little about that, I knew.
Yeah, so the North Star Accountability System's new this year, and it replaces the Minnesota's Accountability System, kind of decades old that looked just at test scores. This is a little bit broader. So the North Star System looks at five different areas. The first one being academic achievement, and that is really looking at what is percentage of our students are proficient on those MCAs, math, reading, science. The second one is academic achievement and progress towards English language proficiency. So this is looking at our students who are English language learners, and are they making the gains that we would expect them to do? There are lots of different indicators that the state uses to make some, what that growth should look like, depending on how long they've been in their country, what their basic, what their initial level of English language proficiency is, and they give us some targets. So that's the second one. The third one is graduation rates, both looking at four-year rates, which is what most of our students graduate at, but also looking at seven-year. We can provide public education up until age twenty-one, and there are some students who have extra credits to make up, or their IEP or Special Education Services really should go past those four years. And this allows us to know that and meet those needs without being penalized. The fourth one is academic progress, and so this is making sure that we're looking at all of our students. It's not just are they proficient, but were they in the exceeds category one year? Are they staying in the exceeds category? Are they dropping? Making sure that we're not just looking at our low performers, but all of our students. Are they making that progress that we would really expect them to make? And the last one is also new its attendance. It's looking at what percentage of our students are attending at least ninety percent of the days. There are lots of reasons they kind of set it there, but really, attendance is a good indicator of graduation, academic achievement, engagement in school, feeling good about school. So looking at attendance doesn't necessarily tell you the why, the why a kid might not be there, and there might be good reasons, but it's a start to identify kids to ask why. Is there something that we could do to make school better? Or make them achieve better, make them more engaged in school? So that was our fifth indicator on North Star. And then the state both identifies schools that need more support, and then also identifies schools that are doing well on those five indicators.
The World's Best Workforce Goals, we look at the data as we're writing the goals, setting for school readiness. I've talked a few times, every year we'll have a presentation on what the World's Best Workforce Goals are. This year, it will be in December for the community, so they can come and hear some of the goals and really go through the plan that we have. It's reading by third grade, what we have set for that goal, closing the achievement gap, college and career ready, and then the graduation rates. And those are all required goals that we do have to put on our plan, and then they will be, the state will be monitoring that and giving us some feedback as they, as we go. Here we have the MCA math data for overall the district wide, and Christine was just gonna explain these graphs before I talk a little bit about them.
So see a bunch of these graphs. They're all kind of built the same way, so along the bottom are years, so two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen for most of ours, and then zero percent proficient, up to a hundred percent proficient. So these are our MCA results. This is math district-wide, so that's third through eighth grade and eleventh grade. The blue line is Madam Edie, and the red line is statewide, percent that are meeting or exceeding state standards.
So as you notice, the math stays pretty steady. Now, we're looking at the math review. When we were looking at, we don't just look at the overall growth for the math as a district. We look at subgroups, we may look at, you know, just the different areas and different grade levels to see where are the, where are the areas that we should be looking at and identifying and different needs. So this happens to be, from some of the math review, we were pulling some of the data and looking at this free and reduced-priced lunch, noticing the gap there, so focusing on some of the strategies that are proven to be able to close the gap in the math area. And you heard me talk about this a little bit last year, where we talked about the CGI, which is the cognitively-guided instruction, and the complex math, which later on this year you'll hear Wildwood, Trish will talk a little bit more about what she's doing with that and some of the other teachers at Wildwood. And the math talks and strategies to really look at closing the gap, they're using quite a few in the middle school and the high school level, too. The reading district data stays pretty steady, if you look overall, same with the state, very, very steady. We look at a few percentage points, is not a big difference when you're looking overall that many students and the different groups. But we did notice a few years ago where the third grade reading scores, we were digging deeper into it, and noticed that the third grade reading seemed to be going down a little bit more than with the state average. And so then that made us look a little further at some of our data, and we noticed that in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, the scores were tending to go up. And we thought, okay, what are we doing differently in the third, fourth, and fifth grade? They were working on the Balanced Literacy Model, and we had at Wildwood, at the K one and two, was more of a phonetic-based model. So we decided to put, two years ago, put the Balanced Literacy Model in place at Wildwood. And we were happy to see that we had some positive results at the second year of students closing that gap, where you can see the scores there from the fall, from the sixty-three point two, that were, you know, predicted at low-risk. And then we actually went up in the springtime to the sixty-nine point eight. We saw that across, you know, kindergarten first and second grade, and looking at it, the first year was pretty stable, but then the second year, we were actually starting to close that gap. The science district MCA data, as you can see, stays pretty steady, we're above the state, overall, the state's pretty steady on that one, too. I mean, there's a slight dip there, but as we looked at the data, we didn't see anything that was significant in any certain grade level or any subgroup area, as we noticed for the overall. But as we looked at the certain subgroup here at the middle school, and some of the project-based learning and some of the inquiry-based learning that they've been doing across the board in the science, you can see how that strategy really has been effective for students that would be, the top graph shows the free and reduced-priced lunch, and the bottom is more special ed students in science, and how we are actually closing some of the gap in that science area. This is very similar to the fifth grade graph, too. The ACT data.
I've been having a little fun this year, because I actually didn't do high school data last year, so I've been learning a ton this year about high school data. This is graduating class average ACT scores. Again, blue is Madam Edie, and red is statewide. Our eleventh graders take the ACT, but then they can continue to take it, and this is the highest score. And it's kind of the same across the state, that the red line as well is the highest score reported for our students. And you, in two thousand and sixteen, the legislation changed so that college exam has to be, the opportunity for a college exam has to be provided for all high school students. And so you can kind of see that dip statewide on average ACT scores. But Madam Edie really stayed stable across those five years. And I, we haven't, we don't have the two thousand and eighteen data, because those kids haven't graduated yet. Well, they have graduated, I'm sorry, they have graduated, but ACT isn't giving us those scores until after they've processed all the summer data. I apologize. These are AP exams for last year. You know, a lot of our students take AP exams, more tests, and a greater percentage of our students received fours and fives on the AP exam than they had the previous year. Five hundred and thirty-one exams, three hundred and thirty-two students took an AP exam. It's pretty impressive. And then I'm just gonna touch briefly on social-emotional learning. The state released some social-emotional competencies last year. They're similar to standards for math, reading, science, some guidelines for districts to take a look at around how do we make a whole child successful. And an increased focus, do we even see that with the North Star Accountability System, on that whole child, multiple indicators of success, how do we make a high-achieving, well-rounded student? And so, district-wide and all of our buildings, we've been doing some social-emotional instruction and learning, which, over the last couple of years, has probably put it in most systemically, systematically, both around attendance, starting to make some phone calls home to ask, hey, we're concerned, is there anything we can do to help? And really kind of basing it around, are there things that we need to know, can we help? And we're starting to see some gains in our attendance data at OH, just basically making more connections and phone calls, and being a little bit more intentional on some of those connections. And so you can see, while it doesn't look very great there on the screen, to go from ninety-five to ninety-seven is pretty cool, greater than ninety percent of the days attending. The other piece that OH put in place is they started a social-emotional curriculum called Second Step, given by the teachers once a week on social-emotional learning. We started, they started rolling it out in two thousand and fifteen with third-grade class, and then rolled it up to fourth grade. So in two thousand and sixteen, it was third grade and fourth grade. In two thousand and seventeen, it was third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, receiving the instruction once a week. This is our third-grade cohort in two thousand and fifteen, following those same students across three years. These are social-emotional behavioral ratings by teachers on our students, saying, hey, what are they looking like? What is their risk level? And that cohort of students went from sixty-three percent at lower risk to ninety-two point four percent at lower risk. One of the questions I saw, when I asked when I saw this data, is it, hey, is it just that fifth-grade teachers are different? And how they rate students, and what they expect? And that wasn't true. When I looked at two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen ratings of fifth-grade students, those students hadn't received the same instruction on social-emotional learning. There was no difference between a third-grade teacher's rating, percentage of kids at risk, and a fifth-grade teacher's percentage of students at risk. So, it's working. They've started to roll it out, because it's showing that it's working, we're starting to roll it out at the K-two building, as well as in the sixth grade at the middle school.
Yeah, as Christina said, it was, it's the second year at Wildwood, and it's the first year at the middle school that we've started with the Second Step and focusing on the attendance piece, too, to really encourage the kids to be there. Any questions?
Have you seen any, the MCA tests for eleventh grader optional? Students can opt out. Have you seen much of that?
Yeah, we, I think across the state, we're seeing more kids not probably taking it at the eleventh grade or at the high school level, but it is, it's increasing somewhat here. I don't know the exact numbers of, you know, what it was from last year to this year, but yeah, I'd say there's a few more.
Because at some point, it's my understanding, that we actually get penalized for that, and so that might be a really good number to kind of.
Right. We're looking at the ACT data a little bit more now at the high school level, because we are finding we have more students taking that, and trying to break that apart and evaluate that. Like Christina said, we're just really kind of figuring it out right now, and how we can use that as monitoring some of the things we're doing.
I just have a comment. I've been involved with the data a lot this year. Lynn invited me to the data retreat, where all the data is looked at by the teachers, and there's a lot of it. So I really appreciate you bringing it down to the smaller, most important pieces for us tonight, and allowing us access to that full data book if we want to dive deeper into it. And so there is a full data book that Lynn usually shares with us, which is great, but the big overview, I think, is wonderful for us tonight in terms of time and big ideas. I also want to thank Christine for, you modeled it very nicely, you put the data up there and you said, and this is a question I had about the data. So just getting the data is not good enough, and I appreciate the fact that we're looking at our data and we're asking questions, and then using that data to make ourselves better. And the way you presented tonight just completely modeled that and showed how as a district we look at data and use data, and I really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
How many kids do we have as English?
How many kids do we have as English learners?
Not a lot.
How many languages do we have?
Oh, that I'd have to, I'd have to look into. I mean, I don't know, you know. But the percentage would be closer to, it's low.
It's low, and yeah, it's less than ten percent.
So we could look at that.
Yeah, and I can get you the numbers.
I'd be interested to know those numbers.
Yep.
Yeah, and quite a few.
Stacy, did you have a question?
I was going to say, and also with the data book, with all the data, I can always send the link out to that, too. If you want to really dig into the data and look at it.
Thank you.
I just, I had a question about the third-grade reading. So in 2014, the number was much higher. Is that because we're using a different curriculum? Is that being looked at? It's a pretty significant change.
Yeah, so it's the MCA. Let me grab that. Yeah, so in, I think it was, they started in K-two Readwell, what was the curriculum that was adopted, 2012, 2011?
Right.
Something like that. And so it took a couple of years for that to show up in an MCA. It was a direct-instructed, Readwell is a direct-instruction-leveled reading program, and it wasn't a whole, it focused primarily at phonics-influency without providing the phonemic awareness, comprehension, kind of enjoyment, engagement in reading. And so we started to see that reflect in our data, you know, 2014, 15, 16. And it was kind of, those kids were continuing to come in low. It was no longer a cohort issue. You know, sometimes we'll have a class that, for whatever reason, is a little bit lower. And so that was when it was like, okay, something needs to change.
These kids are now on the new curriculum, and the K through second grade, you expect to see those scores go back up. And so have you had to do extra help for the kids that are, I'm guessing, now in fourth, fifth, sixth?
Yes. So as they came in as third graders, they came into a balanced literacy approach at OH. And then this is kind of that cohort trend. So, yeah. Sorry. I can...
Right there.
So these are those cohorts of kids that came in. So in 2016, which would be the green color, that was when they came in as third graders, and sixty-six percent of them passed, or were proficient on the MCA. By fourth grade, they were up to seventy-some-odd percent, and by fifth grade, they were back up where we would have expected them to be. So we're, you know, they made those gap-closing growth between third grade and fifth grade, but our concern is you shouldn't be coming in that, they shouldn't be coming in that low in third grade.
But the 2018 number is still at sixty-four percent on here.
Yeah. So the change at Wildwood happened...
Two years ago.
Two years ago. When you change, and Lynn can probably talk about this better than I can, but when you change instruction that first year, you tend not to see the gains that you would expect. And also, if you're, two years ago, it would have been our second graders who got one year of balanced literacy at Wildwood, and then one year at OH. And the first year you implement a new curriculum, you tend not to see the increase. It's usually the second and the third year that you really see the change in scores, in part because it's implementation. The teachers are learning it along with the kids, so...
And we are seeing it, like in the, and we are seeing it now, as you could see in the second grade, or the kindergarten and the first grade, but they don't take the MCA until third grade. So we really can't see the effects that it will be in the MCA for a couple of years, like about three, three years, I would say. Once the kindergarten class is all the way gone through to the third grade, we'll be able to see more of the effect happening, so.
Any other questions? The MCA data is, you know, starts in third grade. And so I know we're using MAP tests as well to monitor student progress. And again, it goes back to that piece about, we have lots of data on our students, but for the board to look at every piece of data in a meeting like this doesn't make a lot of sense. And so I'm sure Lynn and Christina would be glad to meet with board members who want to dive deeper into that data, because there is additional data that we're not seeing tonight, and it's not fair to put you on the spot to ask you, and how are those MAP scores? But there is additional data that we're not seeing tonight that shows how we're monitoring and watching student progress through the curriculum change.
Right. We also do the A-reading, A-math, and A-reading at the, at Wildwood level, plus their monitoring, progress monitoring, things we put in place, too, so we can tell, okay, is it making a difference all the way through? And we monitor it closely, so we will know it, it's making a difference. We don't wait until the MCA happens for the third grade, so.
Yep.
And if you do want to hear more about it, certainly we can meet and talk about it, too.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Kathy Welland, coming to talk to us about community education facility improvements. Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, I'm Kathy Welland, Madam Edai Community Education Director. I'm very happy to be here sharing how Madam Edai Community Education has been working to improve various facilities over the past three years, often with assistance from community groups and district departments. These partnerships are extremely vital to the improvements, and the list from 2017, 18 typifies this effort. Community education has worked with a half a dozen outside groups, such as youth basketball, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and hockey. We've worked with the city of Madam Edai and district departments, including buildings and grounds, and staff at nearly every school. The partnerships have included initial ideas, financial assistance, volunteer work, and more. I'll just highlight a couple of improvements. At early childhood, we replaced an individual sink with a wash fountain, and that greatly reduced the wash time in two early childhood classrooms. The teachers were ecstatic.
I bet that, yes.
At the middle school, we improved navigation, so you'll see it when you walk in the building with the hall and gym signage that's there for visitors and guests and school staff. At the high school, we added acrylic plexiglass on five ticket booth windows, and that helps keep our ticket takers warm, especially on nights like tonight. At the outdoor athletic fields, we had an anonymous donor contribute a scoreboard for softball. That's a big-ticket item. And then we worked with a couple of different associations to get matching dugout covers on three different ball fields. At the district center, we have three outdoor ice rinks over there, and we repaired fencing on those with the hockey association, and then thanks to the city, we added a new gate and signage at the rinks. The biggest improvement that we've worked on this past year is the gym, right next door. And that was built in 1932, and it was used for high school and middle school, physical education and sports. In fact, I just did a little tour with some folks at the community lunch who actually used that as a gym. So in 1992, it became, this became a district center, and housed some district programs. And for the past three years, we've used the gym for early childhood gym space, and with portable equipment. And then we used it for, we use it for adult pickleball and then some community events. So the improvement started almost a year ago, because on MEA weekend, we took out basketball, backboards, gymnastics, rings, and all sorts of stuff from the walls and the ceiling. And then we patched and painted the gym, and there's a picture of what the gym looked like after it was painted. And then we designed a playground, a permanent playground, just for a corner of the gym. And the reason we wanted it just in the corner, so we can still do community events, but we didn't want to have to move equipment in and out all the time, because it's really a hassle. So we designed a gym, and here's, here's the framing, and some more things added, and there's a worker, and so here, so here the gym is pretty much complete. There it's more complete. Then we put in a new floor. This is the black, the black is a subfloor. And then they added an adhesive and put in a floor on top of that, so that's a little more glossy with colors. And then we, the red is the road that the early childhood kids can ride their bikes on, and they have to go in a certain direction, so the red's the road. The gray is a pickleball court. That yellow circle they can use for, it's big enough for a, for one of our early childhood classes to stand around in the circle. Got a little hopscotch court there, and then on the right is a line, so they know how to line up. So we put a lot of thought into how this should be designed, and we already want to make an improvement. But anyway. Then we poured a spongy floor underneath the gym equipment, because it had to be, those playground people want stuff safe. So we had to pour this floor. So they're actually, in this picture, they're hand-troweling the blue underneath, they put a black base on, then they do the blue, so it looks like that. And that gray was going to be the parking lot, but it hasn't turned out quite that. But it's okay. So, and the whole, and then to the left of the slides, we added a loft. And the loft was over at the early childhood center in a classroom, and it was really in the way, and they really wanted it out of there, so we found a home for it over here, and it'll be a permanent addition to the playground. And that's kind of what it looks like with the loft, and the pickleball net. And these are the pickleball players, and they love it, love, love, love it. So they're over here playing, and these are the kids, and they love, love, love it also. So the final step we have to do is, some of the acoustic panels look kind of gross, so we're going to put some fabric over them, but otherwise, it's, I think, done, done, done. So that's just an example of how we work with, you know, our people in our community and various groups to make some improvements and enhance our district facilities. I'll entertain any questions, if you have any.
Can we move our meeting into chat?
Yeah. Hey, and improve the smell greatly.
Well, I've been around and back in that area while this, really is amazing, the progress of it. But what has impressed me is the amount, the greater usage of that space now with the pickleball players. I think every day there's a pickleball, and it gets pretty competitive over there. It's pretty fun to watch, so. Anyway, great job, Kathy.
Now we have to lock the door, because now everybody wants to get in it, so you've got to be careful for safety's sake. In early childhood, the parent advisory will have, they'll do some open gyms. They were doing them last year, too, but this will be a really bigger draw. And I think the first one will be like a ribbon-cutting, or I don't know, they're going to grand opening, or something like that, so.
I was just going to say, she gave us a tour of the community ed advisory group, and if you haven't seen it up close, I encourage everyone to go look at it. I think it's very well-thought-out and very well-done, so great work.
Thank you. And you never know, because, like, we had to move a little water pipe, because it would have been right in the middle of the playground, so we had to, like, shorten that, and we had to shorten doors and lengthen this over here, and it's all stuff you've never, you never would think of. And Julie's been just wonderful to work with, Julie Osterbauer, so she's involved in all of this stuff. I don't know how she even has time.
So I know board members understand this, but just so the community understands as well, the funding for this came from?
Community ed and associations.
So there was no general fund?
No general fund dollars went to any of this. So, thank you.
Good question. Thank you very much. We have no action items tonight, but we have some committee reports. AMSD, Mike?
Yeah, last Friday was really kind of an interesting meeting. We were able to have, AMSD invited both gubernatorial candidates, Jeff Johnson and Tim Walz, for a visit, and so they gave both about a half an hour, a little over half an hour presentation, including some questions. The questions were from the election guide that was prepared by the AMSD, and so there wasn't any, you know, we had to make sure everybody had the same question. And I thought it was very interesting, and it was fun for me to be, to watch it and to learn about what these guys are thinking for education. It was specifically for education, you know, what are your budget priorities, you know, asked about the formula, a bunch of questions, and I found the answers very interesting from both candidates. Superintendent was with, too, and that was kind of a neat thing. But it was just sort of a, just a question-and-answer session, and just was, like I said, pretty, I'm happy they were there. That's all it was.
Kevin Johnson, you got MAFs, did you?
I should do. Well, Fund Drive is underway. We have visited all the schools as of today, and provided information, and talked about it to all the staff. And we'll have envelopes and letters going out in the next few days. Lots of, we've got a folding machine in back that folds all these things, and they don't let me use it, because it tends to take fingers. No, it doesn't, but it's an interesting machine. The next thing up, we have Morning with MAF coming up on October 24th. It's at the high school. Barbara's going to say a few words, and we're going to showcase the high school and what's going on there. I think we've got a number of people coming that are alumni. We've got a couple of folks from the class of sixty-two, so they were never at that building. And I think everyone will be amazed at what's happening at the high school, so we're very pleased to showcase that. If you're interested in coming, you can go to wwwMAFGIVES.org, and right away, you'll see a sign-up. You sign up, and it's free, just come. The last thing I have is the Delwood MAF thirtieth anniversary party on November 9th. Start at seven is when the band Louis Groove, which is a local band made up of a number of people from Madam Edai schools. In fact, Karen Moan, back in our office, is one of the band members. So this can be also purchased. This one is thirty dollars a ticket. You can purchase it also online. I personally picked out the appetizers. I did, I really got some good ones coming, so I would love to have you there if you feel so inclined. It should be a good time.
Thank you. Lucy, MSBA.
So MSBA had their first metro area coffee and conversations, which I attended. We spent that morning, come up with topics for the other metro area meetings coming up. The next one is in Richfield. It's on a flyer. I had Laura put in the board packet. So in the board packet, there's a flyer from MSBA that has all their training dates and all their events for the entire year, so we can plan ahead. So that is attached in the packet. The delegate assembly is coming up. Julie McGraw is a representative for our area, and I will attend that as well. We do not need any more delegates for our area, but if someone would like to be an alternate, I'll be sending an email out to all the districts in our area to see if anyone's interested. And then finally, there was an opinion piece in the Star Tribune by Ted Calderi, which the president, or the executive director of MSBA Kirk Schneiderman responded to, and you were given a link to that in your MSBA notes. I printed it, meant to bring it, and I forgot, I'm sorry. But what I find most interesting about this is that when we don't tell our story, no one does. And so I want to acknowledge Alice and her work in telling our story, and getting that out in the paper, because it makes a difference.
Thank you, Alice. So I know this Metro 916 is in your packet. Other stuff, committee reports?
The curriculum committee met. Lynn Beaker chairs that curriculum committee. We reviewed the same PowerPoint presentation we saw tonight as a board, and looking at the data. That is a committee that's required by statute, and we are looking for parents and community members to join that group. And so if you're interested in that, that's how I first became involved in the district. As a parent, I sat on that committee, and then sat on the engineering board before taking on the role as a school board member. And it was a very good educational, informational piece to give good background before taking on a bigger piece of the pie. So we are looking, though, for parents. There is a required makeup of that committee, a certain number of parents from each building and community members, and so if people are interested in that opportunity, they can reach out to Lynn.
Just an update from the community ed advisory group. The October community lunch was held yesterday in this very room, with sixty-eight people attending. Last year, there were fifty-one, and the year before, there were forty-five, so it just keeps growing. And music was provided by Madam Edai's own Michael Schumacher, who's a singer and guitarist. And the next luncheon is November 7th. Also, TEDx Madam Edai is scheduled at the end of the month, and it's already sold out. And the Sixteenth Annual Madaridi, One Community, One Author Event, is Monday, November 5th, at the Chautauqua. The event features Minnesota author Alison McGee, who you all have a bookmark, and I actually read one of her books. It was a very quick read, and I thought it was really good. And so you can take this bookmark to remind you about the event.
And to read the book.
Yes, or any of these books listed.
So can I say a question? For the TEDx event, my understanding is we have two of our high school students presenting? Or is it one current student? or is it one current student and one alumni who was presenting? We have a ninth grader presenting, don't we, at TEDx?
I have to reach out to Kathy for this.
I have a P, P is presenting, you know, it's students.
Mm-hmm. I can't remember if the second student, though, was a current student or an alumni, but I know we have a ninth grader.
An alumni.
Alumni.
We have, it's Karen Moen's son, whose name escapes me, but Moen is the last name.
Right. And then the, the ninth grader from the high school is presenting on music and, what else? But it's tied to achievement, I believe. So it should be a really good presentation and also tie it to some of the things Lynn was talking about. So if you have tickets, I think it'd be exciting to see one of our students present in that format. So thank you for all that work.
Thanks to the committee.
Adam Moen. You know, when you're this old, it comes a little slower. But I also wanted to talk, we have, MAF has done a thing where we will subsidize the tickets. There are still some tickets held back for students. And MAF is putting fifteen dollars to any student who wants to go, so the cost for the student would be ten dollars. My understanding, there's three students, two, okay, two signed up. We have many more slots. So any students out there watching this, or if you can spread the word, we do have, we have, Olivia, I think, is...
Probably not watching.
But we do have some...
Doing homework. Like, good to know. Anybody else? Superintendent report.
I have a few things. So first, we have six students who qualified for the Minnesota State Honor Choir, four seventh graders and two eighth graders. The seventh graders are Corinne Smith, Lucy Ross, Christina Grabner, Catherine Bennett, Alexa Atkinson and Ethan, oh, sorry, the eighth graders are Alexa Atkinson and Ethan Hottman. And that is, I don't have the time, but it's going to be held on November seventeenth at St. Andrews. There were six hundred students who auditioned for the spots and a hundred fifty students made the Honor Choir. So we are very excited that those six students made it into the choir. The Madaridai area preschool received a four star, which is the highest parent aware rating from Minnesota's Quality Rating and Improvement System administered through the Minnesota Department of Human Services. These ratings guide families to quality care and early education and provide a mechanism for awarding early learning scholarships. So congratulations to the preschool for that rating. Also, our MAC, our Madaridai Adventure Club, received certification as a Minnesota Department of Human Service Child Care Site. And this is a new certification and it's the result of federal and state legislative, legislation and covers a variety of areas, including staff orientation, health and safety training, child development and learning, relationships and with families and more. And we know that it was a really cumbersome and difficult process and we are very impressed that that certification came through and they did well, so thank you for that. Thanks too to Bill Manazi and Julie Osterbauer for submitting an application for the school safety grant. I can't remember what we say. I'll get, I'll turn to you for the, the quote about, about this at the end, but, but the department received a total of one thousand one hundred eighty-seven applications and requested about ten times more than the available amount, as you know. Our district was one of the ninety schools that was awarded the school safety grant. And so we did, although we, we did apply for more, we did receive forty-one thousand dollars for securing entrances and communications at OH. So although we applied for more, you know what I could...
Yes. Is it better than poking the eye with a sharp stick?
There you go. That's what, so we could have been, yeah. So we're, we're excited about that. So thanks to Julie and Bill for, for submitting that and...
Absolutely. Thank you. Great job.
We also, oh, and of course, I want to remind you of the upcoming levy meetings, October fifteenth at six-thirty in Wildwood, in the Wildwood Media Center and October twenty-ninth at six-thirty in the High School Media Center.
Was the one this week well attended? The eighth?
It was attended by people who can spread the word to others about information and answer questions. Well attended.
Like all of us were there except me, but...
Oh, I see, in that regard. It, we had a handful of community members and then Julie and Mike were at this one. And so we have, it's been nice, I will say, or to have, to have board members attend those levy presentations, just to be there so that you can answer questions as they come up. So we're thankful that you've been attending those too. I know that's also a lot of time for you, so thank you for that. And so those are all the, that's my update. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn, please.
So move. Second?
Meeting's adjourned.
One hour.
Wow. Can you say your quote?